Being here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. introductory number three twenty-six authorizing intermunicipal agreement to support recreation and positive youth development programming. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. As we vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. introductory number three twenty-seven authorizing agreement to relate agreement relating to the Flower City Public Health Corpse. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. introductory number three twenty-eight authorizing agreement and amending the two thousand twenty-three twenty-four budget relating to the Drum Court Associates World Cup Championship. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just one question, Madam Chairwoman. Just because I don't have the article in front of me, could you just tell me is this, are we, because I seem like I recall us doing this in the past, right? We've done this before, we're kind of bringing them back?
Last year, I believe last year was the first year we brought them back in a while.
Yeah, did we, what's, there used to be a number of revenue that kind of was attached to this event, like that it kind of, do we, do we track like how many hotels? Or how, how, how the impact of this particular event?
We do not track the impact of the economic plan, the economic development that happens as a result of them being in Rochester.
Okay.
And I don't know, I'm going to ask Christina, is there a way we could do that?
Or just how many people do we anticipate being involved in this event?
I'm going to ask Eric to come, Eric, if you come to the mic.
Thank you.
So we can at least tell you how many participants we have, Eric.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This year we anticipate close to ten thousand people.
See, that's a lot of, see what I'm saying, that's a, that's a lot of people. And oftentimes, I know when we had like the Jehovah Witness would come to town, and that was an annual thing, it was a big thing. There was a number attached to like how much revenue that that was bringing to our community. And I, I just offer for consideration, I'm not looking for an answer today or anything, but if there's a way, especially if this is going to be an ongoing annual thing, if there's a way where we can really highlight, maybe working with Visit Rochester or one of those agencies to kind of quantify and qualify the, 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 the impact of over ten thousand people coming to this, our region. And even if also to look at where out of, out of ten thousand, where are they all kind of like coming from? You know what I mean, like is this, is this worldwide, because it's world, it says world championship, so, or is it just, is it more regional? Is it more, you know, it'd be nice to just see some of that data captured if possible.
Absolutely, yeah, I think Visit Rochester probably would be the place to follow up, so we'll do that.
Thank you so much.
I have something to say about it too. Yes. You bring up Visit Rochester, I, I heard recently that they, with the, when the PGA came to town, they worked with them to send out to all of the people who had signed up, kind of like a guide to Rochester where to go for this or that. And I wonder for this event, ten thousand is, you know, a lot of people coming here, if Visit Rochester would be interested in doing the same thing.
We'll definitely look into that, yeah.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. Happy to see that this event's coming back. One of the things I've always enjoyed is that these guys practice all over the place. So, do we know what fields they're going to be at? It'd be, you know, just maybe for a future reference, it'd be nice to be able to welcome them, you know, because normally they're up, in past years, they were always at Waring Road. You know, rain, sleet, well, it didn't sleet, but it usually rained, and those kids were out there doing it. And it would just be nice to know, you know, who's here, who's there, if we could maybe get a little, start, maybe treating them like we actually want them to come back. Maybe do a little rah rah for them. Because we don't give them any money, right? We just let them come in. So, it'd be kind of nice if we could really roll out the welcome wagon and, you know, they, they usually, and, and I believe they also have a nighttime event where they kind of get along and socialize too downtown, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Well, if you can just, obviously not now, but if, give us an idea of...
We can provide the locations that they're going to be.
Fields are at, yeah.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Because that would be really cool to know, and, and maybe even do some press around, hey, we got people from out of town, so when you hear all this, all this loud band music, that's what's going on. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, no further business, Recreation Human Service Committee stands adjourned. We will reconvene at four P M. for the public safety.
Well, I'm concerned about the lack of good management and service, I mean, just contract with these companies. Well, there is none, there really, there really is nothing comprehensive, that's for sure. And I'm also concerned about, you know, the raw deal, I think local people are getting is these contracts with the company. You know, they're, they're not giving them good contracts, they have to do the work, so, we have to figure that out. Yeah, I did see that, yep, it, it is true. Yeah, alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll wait till you give me the green light. I, I think there's a few people's city administration is responsible. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll get that. Yeah, okay, okay. Yes, my, my conversation was on the, was on YouTube, so I stepped away. Yeah, what's up?
That's why I have the live mic.
Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee to order and ask the clerk to call a roll.
President Melendez.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
President Matt.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Pio.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
So before we begin our business for the month, we will have a presentation on the Give Initiative, as well as, I'd like to actually pass the floor for a moment to my council colleague, Councilmember Lightfoot, to talk a little bit about what's going on with the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman. Just want to let the council members know, as well, as many of you probably already know, and first of all, just before we even get into that, I'd ask if you would indulge me for just a few seconds to just take a moment of silence, if you would, for all of the victims that we have seen very recently, too. A 15-year-old young man was shot and killed on Jefferson Avenue, just blocks away from my barber shop, who happens to be the grandson of the deacon in my church. A 22-year-old man was gunned down, Tayshaun Dmitri, on Kenyon Street a few days ago, who was the grandson of a pastor emeritus in my church. And one of the young men on North Street that was gunned down in front of S and Ts is a cousin of a pastor of one of our churches. And so this, I've been dealing with this on a very personal level, and I know that there are others who have been impacted by this violence in our community. So I would just ask, just for a few brief minutes, if you'd just indulge me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you. Brief seconds, I meant. So, we've been working in the Rock Against... For those of you who may not know, I am the chairman, as well as Councilwoman Harris also works as the media person for the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. And I am the chairperson, founder and chairperson. We are founding members of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. We started this work many years ago when we first came on the legislature, on the council. And we've been doing this work through the times when we've only had maybe 20 homicides, but we averaged 30 to 40 homicides a year prior to the pandemic. And we felt that this work was important then. Nick Patidi's here. We've worked a lot alongside a lot of the Rochester Police Department, along with Captain Murrow, who's been for long-term, first day-one guy working with us and partnering with us. We've been through six police chiefs, that's a fact. We've been through three administrations. We've been through a numerous amount, probably four fire chiefs in this process, but we're still here, fighting this cause. And we had over 85 homicides. The Mobile Trauma Unit was a result of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. The homicide response that we currently have is a result of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. The, just to name a few, the Crisis Intervention Specialists and Team is a result of recommendations from the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. And the Gun Trace Data Report that we just released to this community very recently to answer the question of where are the guns coming from, are a result of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. And as I close, I want to let you know that our work is not done. We released, we had a National Clergy for Safe Cities Summit here in June, where we're working with people from all across the country and trying, they're grappling with this problem all over the country. But we're working and we're calling all people to the table over the next couple of months, and we're starting with a solution-based planning sessions we're having. And we're doing the August 14th, this coming Monday, and the 21st, 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers. We meet every second Monday anyway of the month. We have been since the pandemic, right here in council chambers. And there are a lot of people who keep saying, "What are you doing?" Maybe people think that we're sitting on our hands, that we're not doing anything. I've already given you some examples of things that we've done in the past, but we're looking for solution-answer-based conversation. We're not having meetings to talk about the problem. We already know what the problem is. People are getting shot, and people are dying. How do we solve the problem? So, we're asking any like-minded persons that want to come and be a part of these solution-based conversations. We're going to be their hybrid meetings. They're going to be on Zoom. They are, they're going to be streamed on our City Council YouTube, so full transparency. All of our meetings have been streamed on the City Council YouTube page and have been since we've been having our hybrid meetings, as well as in-person. Parking is free here downtown after 6:00. You can park right in the parking lot. There was on the bus line. The building is secure. There's no excuses. You can log on via Zoom. You can be home, in your kitchen, in your bed, wherever. But we want you to be a part of this conversation, okay? Monday, August 14th is the first one. There's going to be two of these conversations, and then we're going to gather all of that data and start putting together an action plan. And then the 21st will be the second part of that conversation, 6:00 PM, here in City Council Chambers. If you are looking for the Zoom information, or you can call 585-428-7538. That is our, for the Zoom instructions. You can call City Council at 585-428-7538. There are flyers out that also we've been posting on our Facebook page that we'll make sure that we get out to the public. I want to thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to put out this message of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. I want to thank Councilmember Harris for her constant dedication to helping us get out the media and marketing. I want to thank the City Council staff for helping us put together the plan for this going forward. But we have committed, there are recommendations that came from the Gun Trace Data Report that Brady made, and then we're going to, we're asking for people to come with whatever solutions that you think that could stop violence in our community. We want to hear from you. We're going to put this plan together. We're going to submit this plan to this community. We're going to, whatever City Council can do in this plan, we're going to do it, okay? At least I'm going to do it. We're going to recommend that it get done, and then we're going to hold our other individuals accountable, from federal on down, to the things that they can do to help us stop this violence in our community. So, thank you. God bless you, and thank you for this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Lightfoot, for that thorough update, and I hope that folks will be here Monday night in council chambers. With that, we're going to turn to a presentation from the Office of Business Intelligence on the Gun Involved Violence Elimination Program. So I'd invite Director Patidi to lead us in that presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. I have two people with me today, too, that can probably help piggyback on some of the questions that you're going to have related to Give. Heather Rodriguez is our Director of Give Operations for the Police Department, and Lisa Deswani is our Case Manager and Client Services Manager for PATHSTONE. I know we had some questions related to what PATHSTONE does and the grant and how it works. As I understand, I've been given 15 minutes to give you kind of a broad-stroke executive-level overview of kind of what falls underneath the Give umbrella. So, I'm going to do my best. This program's been around for about 10 years, so I know some of you guys have been a part of this the entire time that you've been on council, and some more recently. So, it's gone through multiple iterations over the 10 years, so we're just going to kind of hit some of the highlights right now. Obviously, this is a, it's a funding program that comes from the state. It's from the Division of Criminal Justice Services, and it's a direct award to 17 different counties that make up partnerships, servicing 20 different jurisdictions. Our partnership in Monroe County has four funded agencies: the police department, the Rochester Police Department, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, and the Office of Probation. We do have other non-funded partners, like the State Police and the parole. They don't, because they're state entities, they can't get the money as part of the award. The direct funding requires us to incorporate four core elements, which I'm going to talk about a little bit as we move forward. All of those are based in what's known modernally as evidence-based practices for policing and police interventions in gun-related violence. Each of them is, has principles from procedural justice and problem-oriented policing, which problem-oriented policing is mostly a model of decision-making that follows a scanning, analysis, response, and assessment process as it goes through for each one of the strategies. And procedural justice loosely is defined as, is essentially letting people know what's going to happen, what the conditions are if they violate certain laws, offering services to people. The idea is that you build up credibility and legitimacy by letting them know upfront what's happening, so that you take the guesswork out of a lot of the strategies. For the Give project, the specific focus and the only focus that the Give money is used on is for shooting incidents involving injury. It's not supposed to be used to stop all violent crime. It's not supposed to be used to chase people around on ATVs, even if there's a gun associated with it. The idea is that focused investment on shooting-related injuries, fatal and non-fatal, is the best-case scenario use for the money. So, I mentioned the four core elements of Give. They're defined in all of the grant, or sorry, the award paperwork, as people, places, alignment, and engagement. And very simply, people and places mean the focus of all the tailored strategies is on the small amount of people and the very few places that are disproportionately involved in and impacted by shooting-related violence. From an alignment standpoint, that means the strategies that we tailor to address some of these problems, whether they're people-based problems or place-based problems, have to be aligned with what we do on a regular-duty basis. The idea isn't that this isn't a pot of money that we do just whatever we want with. It's that it's part tied into our violence-reduction strategy. And then from an engagement standpoint, they're really hitting this hard in this most recent round of funding. The idea that there's more of an outreach effort to get the community involved in solutions, I mean, the council member talked a ton about the Rock Coalition Against Gun Violence. That's a, that's a great partner for us in the Give funding. There's a lot of grassroots organizations that have solutions for violence related to shootings that we can take advantage of. The idea now is that we're pushing more of our funding sources towards community-based engagement. I mentioned that there are four evidence-based practices. The award requires that anything that we do with the money associated with this program follows one of these four different evidence-based practices. And this comes directly from the state through their Office of Research, Justice Research. The four evidence-based practices are hotspot policing, so really focused on micro-locations in the small amount of places or neighborhoods that are disproportionately affected by the violent crime, specifically the shootings. SETED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which really looks at the built landscape, so the way that neighborhoods are laid out, or businesses are certain, are laid out, blight in a certain neighborhood, the contributing factors to shooting-related violence, and how we can potentially impact those. Focus deterrence, which I mentioned a little bit before, is really the kind of three-legged stool of deterrence: certainty, swiftness, and severity when it comes to punishments. But the idea that you also offer alternatives to punishment. It's not all-enforcement-based, that there are intervention and prevention methods in all of the work that we do. And then, obviously, everybody on the council's familiar with street outreach. The grant requires us to work with the state's street outreach group snug, but it does not preclude us from working also with pathways or advanced peace. So, a lot of the stuff that we do is kind of, it falls in all three of those different camps. Specifically for the, this is the 10th year of funding for this, so this is Give 10. I don't know why they use Roman numerals and just not numbers, but this is Give 10. So, it's not Give X. It's not, we're not going back to the 90s. So, a couple of the new requirements are that the micro-hotspot locations are specifically street segments. So, I know we've talked a lot over the course of the last, like, six months about the small number of street segments that are responsible for a disproportionate amount of the crime. This grant really locks us into that kind of thinking. We used to, years passed, be able to kind of draw a box around a hotspot and say, "Okay, go do good police work in that hotspot." And what we found is our strategies generally aren't that well-received in the neighborhood, and you kind of treat everything the same when it's not like each other. So, the idea is that we move towards a much more micro-focus on street segments. Just want to put this out there, there's no knock warrants are not permitted in any form or fashion with any Give money. So, nothing associated with our violence-prevention strategies that's tied to Give has anything to do with no-knock warrants. There's a requirement in the paperwork that we have to fill out for the state that the Crime Analysis Center plays a large role in both helping us identify the locations, identifying the people that are disproportionately committing these crimes, and then help us develop and roll out the plans. This year in this cycle, we have to, I mentioned before, the SARAH process, the Scanning, Analysis, Response, and Assessment. That is a formal process now that we have to include in the grant, and part of that features a shooting review for non-fatal shootings. There's a new programming component now, too, for integrated youth engagement, which Heather can talk about a little bit, if you guys have questions on that. And then the big change this year in Give 10, as opposed to any of the other previous nine years, is the creation of a non-fatal shooting team. So, this is a, this comprises personnel from RPD to District Attorney's Office and the Crime Analysis Center. These are new positions funded specifically to treat the non-fatal shootings like we do the homicides, investigate them very similarly with the same focus, and part of that comes out of a pilot that was developed in Utica and Newburgh, is being rolled out to larger jurisdictions in the state: Buffalo, Syracuse, and Rochester, being the three primary ones. And really, the focus is on maintaining a small caseload, so we can dedicate more time and more resources to those non-fatal shootings. So, in our, I'll go through a little bit what that looks like from a funding standpoint in a minute. That also, because it's a pilot, there are protocols around data collection that we have to submit to the FINN Institute, which is out of the University of Albany, which DCGS will then be tracking for comparison purposes, and their evaluation of the pilot. So, we don't really have any say in what we can collect and not collect. We do go a little bit beyond what their requirements are, but from a statewide level, they'll be able to standardize all the different jurisdictions for evaluation. So, our budget for Monroe right now, this year, is $6.2 million, a little, little over $6.2 million, which is a massive increase from what it has previously been. However, as I mentioned before, the non-fatal shooting team eats up a bunch of that money, and I'll show you why when we get to the RPD-specific budget. But that is mostly in personnel cost. Something else that's new in this, this cycle for Give 10 is they, DCGS is now, they've now identified Tier 2 sites, which don't have the same violence-related problem to shootings, but have a similar violence problem in a jurisdiction that crosses over with one of the main ones. So, for us locally in Monroe, that's Greece PD. So, there is a portion of the money set aside for the Greece Police Department, and their focus is on domestic violence. And, you know, anything that has a gun involved in Greece. But most of it's a crossover between crimes that occur in the city with people that actually live in Greece. So, there's a component with that. The District Attorney's Office gets about $1.4 million. Sheriff's Office gets about $500,000. The probation is about a million, and then we eat the lion's share of that with $3.2 million. So, I know we're most interested in what the RPD budget is here, so it really falls into kind of seven different categories. First, right off of the top, RPD acts as the pass-through for all the program personnel that's assigned to this project. So, we have the Give Director who's here. We have a Give Lead Analyst. We have a new Give Non-Fatal Shooting Analyst. And then we have some student researchers. All of those positions support the grant overall and manage the coordination of all the agencies, but they come out of RPD's budget. So, that's the money that gets subcontracted to RIT every single year. We also have, as I mentioned before, PATHSTONE acts as the entire project's case management and client services provider. So, Lisa's here, can kind of answer any of those questions related to that. But again, that money is passed through the budget that you guys pass, and then we subcontract with PATHSTONE. As I mentioned before, the massive increase in funding this year is primarily around the Non-Fatal Shooting Project, which in this grant cycle is going to cost about $2.3 million. And that is for eight dedicated non-fatal shooting investigators and four partially-funded sergeants, who are the bosses of those investigators. The idea here is that the investigators will The idea here is that the investigators will only work on non-fatal shooting cases. They don't carry any other caseload and we are going to organize their caseload so that the maximum cases they carry at any time is 10. And then there's all sorts of reporting requirements that go back to the state for the FINN Institute to analyze moving forward. The idea is that with a smaller workload and more resources available to them, that we can have a better case clearance rate on non-fatal shootings. We can examine, or we can investigate them more thoroughly when we're not also dealing with burglaries and larcenies. Doesn't mean the department won't, it just means those officers won't, those investigators won't. We have $22,000 set aside for youth engagement. I know that number looks small as it relates to all of the other numbers that are on there, but that's specifically for police overtime, which is going to be a small piece of what we actually do in all of this. Primarily, this will be done with on-duty resources from our Community Affairs Bureau. And mostly, under the GIVE money, we will be supporting the District Attorney's Street Smart Program, which they run in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, the Police Athletic League, which is going to be ramping back up, and the Just Try programming, which is run out of the probation office right now. So those are mostly the youth engagement pieces that we'll be handling under GIVE. Hotspot policing, I mentioned before, is a small, small micro-locations that we'll be focusing on. We have $155,000 in overtime funding to supplement on-duty resources for place network investigations, street segment initiatives, and then rental cars that we use pretty sparingly in this grant. Focus deterrence initiatives accounts for about $215,000 in this grant, mostly to support on-duty resources tied to group violence interventions. So really trying to get at these street-level groups that are feuding back and forth, that are causing a lot of shooting-related violence. Our chronic firearm offender enforcement activities. So I mentioned before, we talk a lot about the small number of people that are disproportionately impacted from an offending side with shooting violence. That's this group right here. Custom notifications, which are again, those same individuals, us literally going to their door, talking to them about what we know about them. We'd like to offer them different services and get them into whatever help they need to keep them from acting on shooting-related violence. And then obviously joint patrols with the state police. And then we have a small amount set aside for travel and training. We're required by the funding to attend a conference every year in Albany where all the different sites get together and kind of go through their results. So from a budget standpoint, that's the big part. I put this up just for context, because I know we get asked about this all the time. The main focus of this grant, shooting victimization, fatal and non-fatal. This is just a quick snapshot of what the trending looks like. And I don't think it's a surprise to anybody in this room that the last three full fiscal years that we had were by far and away the highest amount of shooting victimization that we've seen in Rochester since we have data back to. But you can see the prior period before that, we had experienced three or four consecutive years of, of declines. 2020 is the calendar year 2020, which makes this a little awkward because this is fiscal year around the funding. But calendar year 2020 is when everything basically exploded. You can see 2021 and 22, and then twenty, last year, 22, 23, which just ended. We're starting to see that come back down to where we, where we'd expect our levels to be closer to. I sent, and the information I sent over to you guys is a analysis that the state does every single month. It's all the GIVE jurisdictions and all of the tracking that the state does. I just pulled out the Rochester ones in here, just to give you an idea of year-to-year comparisons. They do these by calendar year. So this is only looking at the first six months of this year versus the six months of last year, and then against the five-year average. And you can see across the board in the categories, they track shooting incidents, which you can have multiple victims in one incident, that's why they count the number of events. Shooting victims, so the number of people that are hit and then individuals killed by firearm violence. We are down significantly in this first six-month window of 2023 compared to 2022. And then they have the basic charts in the bottom. You guys have this in the handouts that I sent over. And then just to give you a frame of reference, I know it's probably hard to see on this screen. When we talk about the street segments, what we're really focusing on is trying to whittle down the total number of firearm-related events, shooting events that we had in the city in 2022. Those counts, I'm sorry, that's the fiscal year 22, 23 up there. So aggravated assaults, those are ones where somebody's hit but not killed. Homicides, obviously where the individual, the wound was fatal. Prohibited use of a weapon is when a gun was fired but nothing was hit. No cars, no houses, no people, but there's evidence that a shot was fired. And a reckless endangerment is when a gun is fired at somebody but doesn't hit a person. Recklessly endangers them or people around them. So you can see we have, we have a fair share of gun-related activity. The, on the bottom left-hand corner, that is all the events broken out across the entire city for last fiscal year. And when we talk about GIVE focusing on the specific areas, that's this larger map. The red lines, which are a little hard to see up here right now, those are the top 50 street segments. It actually works out to be about 65, once you factor in all the ties, citywide over the course of the last three years. And you can see just how active they were even last fiscal year. So all of the GIVE efforts and all of the GIVE funding, from RPD's standpoint, will be spent in those small areas so that there's a focus. The idea is that if you can have continual improvement in these small areas that are disproportionately affected, that you can affect the overall number, rather than running around from shooting to shooting to shooting to shooting. That was it for an overview. So now we can answer any questions you guys have.
Yes, thank you very much for the overview and presentation. I'm assuming most council members will have questions, so I'll just go from the left to all the way through the days. So I'll start with Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick. You make a very good PowerPoint presentation too, I might add. So you listed the four different interventions, I guess, that can be used. What's the breakdown of how much gets used on what and when is that decision made? And let me, let me put a point on the question. So SEPTED is a thing that we, we hear a lot about. I don't, it's hard to know exactly how dollars are spent on SEPTED. So where does that factor into all this?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. We worked on a SEPTED project in the Chilai Ave area over the last two GIVE cycles, mostly around lighting, working with DES to, to put up brand-new lights down there. We put up some bollards in front of a well-known location where people would drive up on the curb that ended up having a lot of violence associated with it. So each year it changes. Typically, we have $40,000, I think, to spend as a group inside of that category. We spent all of that plus some the previous year. So we don't have any funding right now in it, but we can reallocate funds if a project presents itself.
So RPD has the, has the latitude to say, we want to spend more on SEPTED versus on the hotspots, right?
So, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But the way this works for the whole thing is the entire group, the executive heads, so the Chief of Police, the District Attorney, the Sheriff and the Head of Probation, all meet to talk about strategies. Even though they're not necessarily city-only departments, all of the focus for GIVE funding, outside of the small amount that goes to Greece, is City of Rochester funded. So we drive a lot of the decision-making for what pots of money get spent where.
I'm curious, you're, from your perspective, and sorry, President Moniz, I'll, I'll end after this. So SEPTED to me is interesting because it seems like it's a very low-impact and budget-friendly effort. Fixing lighting in an area can go a long way. It doesn't require us consistently having people at that area being paid overtime, you know, all day, every day. What does the data say? Should we be doing more SEPTED than we're currently doing?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we should be doing more of everything. But understanding that the, the funding, to your point, an efficient use of the funding would be in that. Part of the issue that we have with the SEPTED projects is there's a lot of bureaucracy around ordering things like cameras and lights. We were delayed six months because there was the, there was a huge backlog on the camera, on the lights that we needed. So like carrying that money over from fiscal year to fiscal year becomes problematic on the grant side of things. But with some longer-term planning, I think mixing the SEPTED elements into mostly the place-based strategies, I think would make the most sense and the best use of the money. So a lot of the things that we're looking at right now around place network investigations are really about invested focus in a certain place for a long period of time and kind of looking at what the needs of the community are in there. Right, I'll use Jefferson Ave as a perfect example, because I know Councilman Lightfoot talks about it all the time, right? Like that there's, we have a very, very significant hotspot for shooting activity in a very small area that has residential needs, it has commercial needs, it has political needs. There's a lot of different things going around there. So focused on those small areas and trying to sustain efforts in those areas, personally, I think would go a long way towards eradicating some of the problems that are associated with the shootings in those areas. The problem is, everybody in the city has a place like that. So prioritizing those becomes a little bit of an issue. And then sustaining it, staying there with effort, both police department effort, city hall effort. When things are quiet is difficult. So I mean, I think that's a question of, of really prioritization more than anything else.
Last thing, $40,000 is what we spent on SEPTED over the years. You just said that there's a significant increase in dollars for the grant. Will there be more dollars in SEPTED?
So the significant increase in the grant this year was specifically around the, the non-fatal shooting project. Basically.
If I could just speak to that a little bit with the SEPTED specifically, because when we finished the project in, in Chilai Avenue, the money that was spent was specifically around the lighting. But there are many things that we felt could be considered under the hotspots policing that do not cost money, where we can do a SEPTED assessment at a specific location and then make recommendations for that location, even if it's a privately-owned business. There was a training that DCJS put on that several RPD officers attended two weeks ago, where we went out to multiple locations within Clinton Section, did the SEPTED assessments, make the recommendations. And we felt that this year, knowing that it took two years to get through the Chilai Avenue project, that if we were able to identify something, start having those place network investigation meetings, bringing in people and getting the numbers ahead of time of what things would cost, we could then put that money into the budget for next year. But there's a lot of things that can be done throughout the year that don't cost that. What we learned was that actually the improvements cost significantly more than we had anticipated and some of the things that he talked about with, just some of the bureaucratic issues, took a longer process. So we thought this year, it would be better to have a full plan in place before we then allocated the budget for next year.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Piggybacking off of Councilmember Gruber's questions about SEPTED. With the data that you guys received regarding the SEPTED locations, can you provide the different areas that you provided that support throughout the city to us?
Places that we've already done.
I know you've done Chilai.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, if you can provide that to us. Thank you. And then the other thing I, I was interested to know is, I saw that you, you put up there the street, the 65 street segments that you have identified. Can you share that, that list with us as well? That full list? Okay. And then finally, I see that in the grant strategy focus, you have, you know, the, the state has identified problem-oriented policing, hotspot policing, focus deterrence, chronic offender targeting, of course, SEPTED. But is there any discussion on trying to really focus more on more preventative measures? Like, like providing some, some income or some capital for community policing? Like true community policing? Is there any discussions about that?
Yeah, community policing definitely falls into those categories. So depending on what we're talking about, if we're talking about walking beats in certain locations, if we're talking about high-visibility patrols, if we're talking about neighborhood section meetings, all of that would fall under the umbrella that we could pull from.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, the, the, that's the one thing that, you know, I, I am very concerned about. I think that we focus a lot about on the hotspot policing. And I think that if we do more of the consistent community policing, you'll see some of those numbers go down. And I mean, I would argue, we should consider that and even push the state to even consider pushing more of that into the actual grant strategy focus.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Councilmember Lightfoot? Vice President Lupien?
Yeah, so with the, with the SEPTED, how do projects get proposed? Like with the lighting project on Chilai Ave?
So what happened with that is they took the data as far as where the violence was. This was two years ago that that project was started. And then each section was able to choose an area that they would put in for a proposal. That one was chosen as the, the one that was going to receive the money. And then they met with business owners and other neighborhood groups within that area to identify some of the things that they wanted to accomplish. I will say, one of the things that we ran into is some of the things that we wanted to accomplish, we learned were not necessarily able to be done with this specific money being public city money. So for example, there were a couple apartment complexes, buildings that had a lot of violence that was happening, that we had identified areas of entrance and exit, that if we had closed off those areas, that might assist. And the property owners were willing to fence the area. And so we said, great, we'll pay for the fencing. But it was privately-owned property. So then it ran into an issue of using city money to do private property projects. And what then happens when that landlord no longer owns the building or the next person decides to tear it down, who's responsible for the maintenance? So then when we really focused on what could the city do, what does the city own, what can they change? That's when it turned to things like the lighting, changing where the parking happened, not allowing people to get up on the sidewalk, hang out at a vacant property, those types of things. So I think going forward, specifically with SEPTED, if we, even if we can't use the GIVE money, if we bring more of the business owners in and explain to them some of the, some of the changes they could make to their own property that might not cost a lot of money, the police are able to do those assessments even for the private companies.
Okay. And thank you very much for that. My other question was around the group violence intervention. I think you talked about kind of some of the programs, but I'm wondering, is there overlap between, you know, Pathways to Peace and Advanced Peace? Or is this something completely different? Is there a different approach?
It's, it's not completely different, and I will let Lisa speak also on this. But one of the things that we do for our focus deterrence efforts is we have bimonthly, we call them firearm offender orientations, where we invite probationers and parolees that have been either recently released from state prison and returned to the community, or recently assigned to probation that have firearm-related offenses and history. And we meet at Baber AME Church and we bring in a myriad of service providers to speak to them about what is available specifically for them. Lisa, and I'll let her speak to this, oversees the case management for that, but that involves Advanced Peace, COMS, Pathways to Peace, SNUG, Rochester Works, Rise Up Rochester, Center for Employment Opportunities, Healthy Baby Network, all of those things. So all of those agencies work together and we leave it up to the people that we invite in that we're dealing with to choose what program they want to associate with and follow up, and then Lisa oversees the case management for that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Victor Saunders is a, a big part of those efforts that we do, so.
Hello. So in addition to the bimonthly orientations, there's two other components that are offered that Pathstone assists with. The first one is working closely with probation. We do a monthly custom notification. And the way that this is differed, this calendar year as opposed to past, is this year, we're focusing on the same people every month. We're going to the same homes every month. It is typically a team of four probation officers, myself. And while these individuals are already on probation, we are reaching out to them to really, within probation, they can only spend a certain, a short span of time with each probationer. So we're going to the home, sitting with them, sitting with their family members, identifying what else is needed for support in addition to what they're already receiving. So it's a great way to bring in the support system that they already have and identify, you know, what else, what else can we do? So that's where we come in and really work behind the scenes with, it could be employment, it could be ID. It could be a lot of other things, including mental health. a lot of other things, including mental health. The last piece of that is getting referrals directly from RPD, families that have been affected by violence, whether it's, it's typically not in the form of homicide, but non-fatal shooting, working with that family directly. And typically, that goes on for several months. Those families tend to need and take advantage of whatever supports we can offer and identify. And it really is, that part of it's quite unique, because some of these families I've never actually seen in person. For example, I had a mom call last night, her kids were shot at. I've been working with her for the past eight months, as her son is known in the community for various things. But she is constantly reaching out, where can I get help? Where can I get more help? So I think the whole approach to the family is really critical, and that's something we're able to provide. And it's something that we're very appreciative, that RPD recognizes the need for that and uses our services to provide that.
That was going to be my question. How do families get connected with your services?
So typically, for the whole family, it is through police. We work very closely with Rise Up Rochester. We're starting to get requests from Strong directly when an individual is still hospitalized after a shooting. But we prefer to get them directly through either Rise Up, probation, or police. But we'll take them how they come, because at the end of the day, this is really about preventing it from going any further.
Specifically for retaliatory cases?
Retaliation, and then being another, becoming a victim again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to yield my time to my colleagues, and I'll, if I do have additional questions, I'll follow up. I do want to note that we have two items before the Public Safety Committee, so I do want to get to those. So, but if we can make our questions pointed, and Councilmember Martin, you're next.
Yes. Outside of here, can you share more information regarding the principles that guide procedural justice that you all use? Could you talk about the difference between hotspot policing and POP model, where they might align or differ?
Yeah. So the, the POP model, the problem-oriented policing, is more focused on the methodology around how you would start to look for a problem, how you start to really break down what it is. It's easy to look at the dots on a map and say, oh, we have a shooting problem right there. But we might not have a shooting problem a block away. What's the difference between that? So really to start to analyze the what and the why, not so much focus on where the dot is on the map. And then it's really just about a model of kind of constantly doing that over and over and over again. What do we know about this? What do we not know about it? If we do a response, then we basically say, okay, what have we learned? How do we, what more do we have to get to? And you kind of just keep going around that wheel over and over and over again. Hotspot policing is specifically about the tactics that you employ, once you figure out where those places are. So I would say the problem-oriented policing is more of a, it's more of a workflow, and the, the hotspot policing is more tactically based.
Got it, thank you. And two more quick questions, and you don't have to, these could be answered in writing. Just like the role the crime analysis center plays in figuring out who's at these hotspot locations. And one question, when you meet with these families who are impacted by violence, and they need material resources, like people need money in this city, can any of the give funds be used to help with rent, housing, those material resources people might need after they've experienced this kind of violence?
Well, I really appreciate that question, because that is something that Heather and I, really in the past four or five months, have spent some time discussing. How can some of these funds that Pastone has been awarded be reallocated to address the needs that we're seeing are coming up? Because Snug is also part of Pastone, we're able to leverage some of the funding that they have. It does, I'll be honest with you, require a lot of commitment to collaboration, conversation. But at the end of the day, we are able to find the funding within the organizations, whether it be through what's been allocated to us or Snug, to address especially some things like immediate need for security deposit for people having to be rehomed on an unexpected note. So it's quite challenging. I personally would like to see more money allocated for those types of situations, because I would say, I, I feel like once a month now, I'm seeing, I'm being asked, like, we need something immediately. And while we know, for example, our partner agency, Rise Up, has funding, there's, that's dedicated for something, we all have that special niche, which is important. But the right now immediacy is something that we're having a hard time addressing. And frankly, people deserve and need to feel safe if they have to return home, and that is not something that is readily available right now.
Thank you so much for your thoughtful response.
Councilmember?
Piggyback on that for one second. We did bring this up, we, we did have this conversation prior to the plan that was put in place for this fiscal year. DCJS isn't opposed to the idea, they are requiring us to provide more data. So us just saying a couple times, we've, we've been asked this by people that we're offering services to, would we be able to do this? They want to know how often, what kind of things, what that, what estimates would look like. But I think the plan for this year would be to gather all that information and propose it more formally in the next cycle.
Sounds great, thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
Well, you pretty much just kind of stepped into that one, so I'm going to make it easy. So do you have a rough budget estimate of what you, obviously, I'm not asking you to give me the budget right now. But I imagine you may well have a rough budget estimate of what it would take to meet those needs for that particular subset of people who need immediate, rapid, emergency, violence-related rehousing. And it's my hope that you might be able to pull that information together and share it with council president, with the chair, council president, so that we might be able to begin to have a conversation with whoever. Thank you.
Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. I love the numbers that you give us here, because that really shows how crime has already, I'm sorry, not crime, but gun-involved violence and shootings and murders are, have been going down over the past few years, which means that, you know, something is working. This doesn't mean that what we are doing here is directly, you know, cause of that, but it's certainly not hurting. Something that really pops out to me is the difference between us and Buffalo in regards to the shooting incidences, shooting victims, and individuals killed by firearms. We got about 70% more shooting incidences, 70% more shooting victims, and 55% more individuals killed by firearms than the next city over. You know, what, what is Buffalo doing that we are not doing, that we could help you with? If that could be any, I'm not quite sure how, how broad that question is.
Yeah, it's an excellent question. And, and that, those numbers have completely flip-flopped over the course of the last decade.
Right.
We were always the...
Yeah, we used to laugh at Buffalo, and here we are.
I don't about laugh, but yeah, we, yeah, I know what you're saying. They're basically doing the same stuff. So yeah, I think we could probably take a trip up the thruway and try to see if they're doing something, using the same four core principles that give supports in a different way. Or my guess is they probably, they've probably made some inroads at integrating it with on-duty resources. I don't know what their staffing levels look like when it comes to vacant positions or anything like that. I don't know if those kind of impacts have, are lessened there? I'm guessing probably not. So maybe they've found some inroads in kind of making this part of a ongoing overall strategy, rather than funded through a state grant. But yeah, I think, I think it's worth checking out.
If you set that up, let me know. I'd love to be involved in that. Something else that people tend to forget is, back when COVID first started, we released everyone out of jail and put that entire onus on our RPD to kind of keep that in check. So I just want to say that I, I love and respect our RPD for having to deal with that. I see Chief Smith back there has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on the, the Buffalo thing. I talked to the commissioner quite a bit. The most recent thing they implemented, which we actually started two weeks ago, was exactly what Nick said, using patrol resources to work on the hotspots, using the Cooper method. So we, he, Joe started it. Last year, we started it two weeks ago. But other than that, it's fundamentally the same.
Okay, so what they did about 10 years ago, we're doing, we're finally doing now.
Last year.
Last year, gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, everything I wanted to ask has already been answered. So just quickly, you mentioned four core agencies. I got three. What are they? If you could rattle them off again?
Sure. The City Police Department, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and the Office of Probation.
Thank you. And then for the 6.2 million, you mentioned seven buckets of funding. Can you rattle those off as well?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can. There, it is focus deterrence, hotspot policing, program personnel.
Councilmember Smith, the document that's in front of us has the, the breakdown.
Yeah, but I was gonna see if I could do it off the top of my head.
Ah, yeah, it was a challenge.
But it is, it is on that slide. It's on the second to last slide.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for your presentation today. This was very informative. We all feel really good about the direction. And I, I think I speak for myself on that, not for myself on that. And, and I would say that we look forward to continuing to monitor this. I, I think having the opportunity, at least on an annual basis, to get an update on how things are going. And if there's any inputs or any supports that we can also provide, you know, we're open to having those discussions. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
So I'm going to move us into our legislative business for the month. So we have introductory number 329, authorizing an agreement related to the 2023 State Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program Grant. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Councilmember, Vice President Lupien?
The, the different RPD divisions, like SCUBA, Squad, Bomb Squad, one, are they purchasing new equipment because old equipment is being phased out versus additional equipment?
They're actually purchasing the same type of equipment, in that it's, the life cycle has come to its end. The majority of it is just replacing old equipment.
Okay, thank you. And is there, do you have an idea of what the dollar amount will be per division?
I do not, but we can get you that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Undertaining motion?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 330, amendment to 2023-24 budget to carry over unspent grant funds for the police department. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Council Vice President?
There's two, I don't know how to, what noun to use, but these, these here that are laid out, the uses of the money, one being the improving criminal justice response to domestic violence, and the other being Project Safe Neighborhoods. And I'm wondering if you could tell me why there's leftover money? Like what, was there a shortage of personnel, or was there a reason that the money didn't get used up?
You're asking why we're carrying the money over in those programs?
Right. So why didn't we use it as we expected to?
Yeah, it is, it's, it's kind of, um, part of it is based on personnel. If we didn't use it up, we extend it to the other year. And also, there might be some events that occur in the next year that we can't attend to, obviously because it's not within that fiscal year of when we receive the money.
Okay. And then what is Project Safe Neighborhoods?
Project Safe, okay, thank you.
So Project Safe Neighborhood is a grant that comes from the Western District US Attorney's Office. This cycle of Project Safe Neighborhoods is going to be focused on gang-related or group-related violence. It's a pot of money that we have, and we're partnering with RIT. They are the actual grant recipient. We are the sub-recipient of that. It's a three-year grant, but we can use the money at any point. So we, we originally got the money in the last fiscal year. We're working on a protocol with RIT to identify the most problematic ongoing retaliatory dispute that we have, and then building a framework around how we're going to spend that money. So we're just carrying it over from last fiscal year to this next fiscal year.
So is there, like, what does that framework look like? I guess I'm wondering, you know, it's saying to efforts to intervene in violent retaliatory gang and violent, involved disputes, but what does that look like?
Yeah, so it's really following the, the gang violence model, GVI model that was built. Essentially, it's focusing, focused deterrence around specific gangs. So it's really building off of like the old ceasefire model.
So that's relationship-based?
Yeah, people-based, yep.
And are those people officers? Or are they, like, part of the pathways at Advanced Peace?
Oh, you mean who's doing the intervention?
Yeah.
It would be, it would be a core team. So it would be, it would be street outreach resources, there would be probation or parole, because chances are the people involved in these disputes are, are on current supervision.
So that's the one where she said, we go and we say what we know about you, and then...
That's, yeah, that's part of it, yeah.
Okay.
And then really, it's around targeted enforcement of the people that are involved in these violent retaliatory disputes. Specifically choosing the most violent, the most retaliatory dispute that we have ongoing, and sustaining an effort at stopping that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. The $35,000 for Lyle Otis, is that separate from what we're doing with Project Greenlight, or is that in conjunction with?
That is the same. But yeah, so the money that we receive for Project Greenlight is just renamed the Lyle Otis.
Okay. So some of that money will actually go towards the actual security cameras?
Yes, it should be. We're waiting to get feedback from the surveys that went out, and we can talk to the crime prevention officers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes, could you explain the undistributed carryover, that column?
Yes, that would be the fringe that's not included. So the RPD carryover is the money, the undistributed money is, has to be separate, that would be fringe.
Ah, so the total would be 162 plus the 29?
Correct.
Awesome. And what percentage of this goes to police overtime?
The undistributed carryover would be the percentage.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion?
Move it.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Roll call?
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pio?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Lupien?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes. The motion carries, and with no further business before the Public Safety Committee, we stand adjourned.
I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order, and recognizing that folks will have to readjust seats a bit, I will slowly ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Did you want me to start now?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Vice President Lupien?
Here.
President Melendez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to start off with two very brief presentations, but on some exciting work that is happening. So we'll, the first one, if it's okay with you, Dr. Nichols, I'll ask you to open up by presenting, and this is related to introductory number 335, which is an intermunicipal agreement for the Rochester City School District's Career Pathways to Public Safety Program, which has been kind of on hold for a number of years, and excited to see it coming back. And just want to hear from Dr. Nichols, unless Mayor Evans, you want it, looks like you have it.
No, Dr. Nichols is going to give it, but I'm just going to tell you that this is going to be a very brief presentation, because this is a huge topic that I would ask for like a longer work session on.
Sure.
Because there's the history behind that and all that. But Dr. Nichols, if you just want to give a brief overview on that, this intermunicipal agreement. And then the one thing I will add before Dr. Nichols gives a presentation is that we're piloting this summer, I don't know if many people know this, a summer Pathways to Public, Public Safety Program that Chief Everett, Dr. Nichols, and Lilly Reese put together for the summer. So we have actually a, a summer program, which we actually a summer program, which we're giving kids a stipend to experience this program as well. But Dr. Nichols, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, push the button, yeah. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I believe you've been provided with a brief PowerPoint for you, and I'm going to review that. I'm here on behalf of Liliana Ruiz, who is the lead on this project, as well as Chief Everett. They both were unable to be here today, so as a part of that team on the city side, I'm here to present this about the Career Pathways to Public Safety. I think most of you are familiar with it, but CPPS is a partnership between the City of Rochester and the Rochester City School District. The purpose is to increase awareness amongst high school students about employment opportunities, particularly we target underrepresented groups and females in the four, what I call disciplines, which are law enforcement, fire service, emergency communications, 911, and EMS, particularly a partnership with AMR. In 2013, the City of Rochester, in collaboration with the school district, reorganized the firefighter training program and started to add the other disciplines. The firefighter training program was originally established at East High School over 25 years ago. So this is an expansion on what they started. Students have the opportunity, starting in 10th grade, to explore the four different disciplines or tracks, which I've already named. It's a three-year program. 10th grade, they do the career exploration, and then at the end of the 10th grade or close to the end of the 10th grade, they determine which discipline they're most interested in. And they go into two years, in 11th grade and 12th grade, in that particular discipline. Recruitment starts in the 9th grade, and I'll go into a little bit later about how we're gonna be rolling that out. You'll see some stats on, I think, the last slide that speaks to from 2013 to 2021, Career Pathways to Public Safety permitted the city to hire 62 students in the firefighter training and public safety communicator disciplines. They, when they finish each of, when they finish the 12th grade and they finish their particular discipline, they are then able to take the civil service exam, and upon passing, would go right into the process to begin the hiring process. This is the first year that I'm aware of that there's been an intermunicipal agreement between the City of Rochester and the school district, and it basically is put into place to outline what the City of Rochester will be responsible for and what the school district will be responsible for. As you are aware, because of COVID, the program was suspended for some time, I think it was 2021, 2022. And of course, we couldn't meet with the students because of COVID. We are very happy to be able to start this program up next month in September, and the intermunicipal agreement goes through June of 2027. So ninth grade, starting with the ninth graders this year, getting them interested, and if they go through the entire three-year program, 10, 11, 12, they will be ready to go into one of these careers in June of 2027. I think I've explained what happens in 9th grade. So we're gonna be starting recruitment. We have brochures, posters, video, all sorts of collateral that we are finalizing in the next week to roll out to the students in September. In October, we will be visiting all of the high schools and making presentations to every 9th grade class. That will be a combination of the city, the school district, and representatives from each of the four disciplines. We will go class to class and have about 30 minutes to talk to the students about this opportunity for them. The applications will be due roughly mid-December, and then interviews will start in January, so that they will know by the end of 9th grade which, that they are accepted into the 10th grade piece, which is the career exploration. I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into, but I did use up my five minutes, so I'm gonna stop here.
I think that's great. I appreciate, I'm sure there's gonna be questions from council, so I appreciate that, Dr. Nichols. I'll start with a couple of quick questions, then pass it off to colleagues who may have some as well. First, I wanna understand a little bit about space. We talked a little bit in the meeting prior to this, it's gonna be at Franklin. I know prior to this, it was at REOC, which seems like probably a building that has more amenities for some of this work. Why the change there? Was that prompted by the district, or by us, or by REOC?
I believe in the previous administration, we were informed that REOC would no longer be available. And in the last year and a half to two years that we've been working on bringing the program back, we wanted to have it, we tried to get a school district or another entity where we could have space for it, and we ended up with Franklin.
Well, ultimately, the choice for location was prompted by the district, more than any other party involved, correct?
I would say that is correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. I mean, it's there, it's there, we don't get to pick the buildings that, you know, the buildings that they use. I would love to have it at Monroe, but, you know, Franklin was available, and Franklin's gonna be where it's gonna be.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my concern about it being at Franklin, well, I won't even go there, because there's a lot of concerns about it being at Franklin, to be honest with you.
I have a lot of concerns, but one of the things that I said about this is that we have time to make it work. We have times for that to also be an enhancement for the district. It gives the district an opportunity to rebrand Franklin, to make it a place where they wanna go. There's enough planning time for us to be able to do that. So while I have my concerns about Franklin, I think it's important to be positive about it, because I think that it's an opportunity for the district, and it's an opportunity for us to be able to get a good pipeline of students to be able to come.
So I just wanna ask, I have two more quick questions, and it's, one is apropos of that conversation. So what is the actual, you mentioned before this, there wasn't an intermunicipal agreement. It was just a program that our CSD ran that we partnered with. What does the actual agreement state? What is our responsibility, the city's responsibility?
So some of the highlights from the city side is that we provide at least one subject matter expert per career pathway to participate in recruitment, career exploration, and technical training in each of those years, based on predetermined schedules and timeframe, so that's someone from each discipline. We also, part of that IMA is we ensure that the City of Rochester subject matter experts are available for collaboration on the curriculum development with the district, and we identify instructors and consultants during mutually agreed-upon work hours and locations, so that the four disciplines will work with the school district to identify the best instructors and consultants from the city, from the school district side. Another highlight is that it agrees to provide updated information to the district from our standpoint on the civil service process, so that they're prepared for it when they finish the program in 12th grade. As far as the city school district side, they commit to providing oversight for the academic programs and the curriculum development that is a part of the program for their students in order to graduate. They will provide the certified program instructors and staff, and they also ensure that students have access to the program location via the approved district student transportation plan. And there is also a section in here that ensures that there's, the school in itself and the classroom spaces that are assigned for this program are cleaned, that the security, storage areas, et cetera. So that's spelled out in the agreement as well.
Okay, thanks. That covered my other question. Councilmember Lightfoot?
Thank you, Chairman Gruber, for allowing me this space. I know I'm not on the committee, but thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My stuff is all too positive. I'm so excited and grateful for this program being brought back. I remember being in a meeting where we were going through a lot of turmoil concerning this program, and we recommended to the administration that they pause for a moment, so that we could get this right. It was very important for our citizens in our community to serve this community. This is a program that has, on the fire side specifically, and of course, it's been expanded to include other disciplines, but has been around for decades, and has been, even my son is a recipient of going through Wilson High School, having an opportunity to go through this program, and now become a career firefighter. And there are many others. The list goes on and on, many of who have now obtained to be officers within the fire department and are good, outstanding, great officers within this department. So I wanna commend the mayor and his administration for taking that pause, allowing us to get this right, or as best as we possibly can. I wanna commend Dr. Rose, I wanna commend interim chief Teresa Everett, who has done a tremendous amount of work in this area of making sure that this was not only done right, but that we had our intermunicipal agreement for the first time ever. I wanna commend the leadership of Executive Interim Chief Teresa Everett, who's not able to be here, and she would not toot and blow her horn, but I'm blowing it for her. She's done an outstanding job. And from my understanding, they had a summer program this year, where they are getting ready to graduate on the fireside, over 14 youth next week, and I believe that that is under the direction of Executive Chief Hudson, who is in the building tonight. Commend you, sir, for that great work of those 14 young people. This is when we talk about gun violence, when we talk about these ills that we have in our community, this Pathways Program is an alternative to violence to our young people in our communities. It's like hitting the lottery. And this is an opportunity that changes quality of life for our residents, and I support it 100%. And I wanna lift up that work of interim chief Everett, Hudson, the mayor, his administration, and all of you. Kudos, good job, and I look forward to working on this program and highlighting it in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
Please forward over the intermunicipal agreement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council?
No, just one last comment, and I know it's late, is, and the other reason why you have an intermunicipal agreement on this is because when we do stuff in the city, we just can't, we just can't agree to trust if it's not in writing. It's not in writing, it doesn't mean anything. So that's why you have this intermunicipal agreement. I get calls all the time from people to say, I was told that, and I'll say, show me the paper. If it's not on paper, it don't mean diddly squat. So this is why we said to the district, and why the district said to us, let the rules of engagements be outlined, and this allows them to be outlined, as you heard from, as you heard from Dr. Nichols. So that's why this agreement was so important, because we're all here, but we may not be here tomorrow. This memorializes what is expected of both sides.
I appreciate that. And you'll be getting an email from me, you and Dr. Nichols, about trying to do the same thing on the lifeguarding and swimming side of things, because that's another place where we've had a chance to partner with the district, but have not really gotten a whole lot of tangible feedback from them. So the more we can get things in writing, the better we can serve our constituents. Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, my point aligns with what Councilmember Gruber said, you know, expanding what public safety means. And I think about Pathways to Peace and the Advanced Peace Programs, and how we can get young people engaged in being a part of that workforce. Have there been any considerations around including that in this program?
Maybe not in that program, but definitely in a program. I think, you know, I'm a big fan of those. I was a peer mediator, for example. I mean, there is such a unique career opportunity for people to be able to be on those sides, for jobs in PIC, for jobs in, for jobs in Pathways to Peace-type positions, where you don't need a college degree to be able to expand in those. I think that that could be something that we definitely could take under consideration, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the information. And Mayor, you said you wanted to share more. If there's time, that you wanna set up additional time, just let us know. But I think this is what we wanted to hear before we move much further on the IMA.
Maybe some of the information that Councilmember Lightfoot talked about, the numbers, the people that have gone through, how they're faring, how they're doing on a job from the long-term perspective. Because there was a pause in this, but there still is great data out on people that have gone through this program. And most people that go through this program, they're very successful. So being able to share that with council as well, I think that would be very helpful as well.
Thank you. And second up, thank you, Dr. Nichols, appreciate it. We're gonna, I'm gonna ask Director Utaro and Deputy Director Lewis to give a brief presentation on introductory number 340, which is the grant that we've received with the library's outreach van. And I wanna start just by acknowledging, I don't know if anyone has been able to go over there. President Melendez and I went over to the Lincoln Library earlier this week, and there's just some incredible work being done at the libraries. I know it's not easy, but it makes a huge difference. So thanks for all the work that you're doing over there, and please let us know what's going on with this library outreach van.
Okay, the slides that you have before you show the vehicle that has been purchased. The next couple of slides are examples of various bookmobiles that we have looked at for inspiration. You see New York City, New York Public Library, Brooklyn Public Library, and Marin County, which we're using for inspiration. We'll be working with Kelly John's design class at RIT this fall to design the interior and the exterior of the vehicle. This is something that we've done in the past. Most recently, we worked with a class to design the new secret room at the Central Library, and their process is they divide the class up into five or six small groups, and they spend the semester designing the vehicle. The Friends and Foundation of the Rochester Public Library is providing small budgets to each one of the teams, so they will be able to actually build prototypes of what they envision the interior and the exterior looking like. Once that's done, we expect that fabrication will begin late December, early January, and our hope is to get the bookmobile on the road next spring. I'll turn this over to Deputy Director Lewis to talk a little bit about how we envision this process working, since it will involve some changes to how we deliver library service at the Lisle branch.
The Lisle branch will be a hybrid location. It will be open some days to the public and closed other days. The days that they're closed, they will have curbside service and access to the faxing, the copying, and the notary services. The vehicle will be shared between MCLS Outreach, the Lisle branch staff, and the children's services staff. From the Lisle branch view, we've partnered with Western New York Childcare Council, who have already identified 20 to 25 small daycares, family daycares, home daycares, and legally exempt daycares for us to provide services for, book circulation, training. They've even offered staff, bilingual staff, to come with us to the homes to provide literacy services. We have one of our staff members who is willing to provide technology services to some of the senior centers, and will partner with Cameron Ministries and take suggestions from the neighborhood association. We looked at the stats from 2019, because most of this work was done at the end of 2021 and 2020, the beginning of 2022. We were closed in 2020 for part of the time and had limited services, so we did look at all of the building usage stats, the circulation, the door count, the PCRES, which is our computer use stats measurement tool, and we will stay open on those large usage days, and we will close on the days that usage wasn't optimal.
Thank you very much. Will there be, so it sounds like some of the daycares and senior programs that you've talked to will be the patrons of this bookmobile. Will it be a set schedule?
We'll probably have a set schedule of every three weeks. We already have kind of like a template of a schedule. We won't be able to go every week, but there will probably be a set schedule of every three weeks, similar to the circulation schedule.
And will it stay predominantly in the northwest, around the Lisle branch?
The Lisle branch portion, yes, the northwest, but the Monroe County Outreach and the Children's Center will be able to go all over the city.
Got it. Thank you. That sounds very exciting. I'd like to see if any of my colleagues have any questions. No questions. Thank you very much.
I'll just add a comment, that this is exciting, and thank you for moving in this direction.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much, and we will move into-
Councilmember Gruber, we have one more comment.
I was waiting for you, Councilmember Patterson.
Just a quick comment. So I missed the Monday visit, but I was over there yesterday at Lincoln, and it is fabulous.
Beautiful.
Just a huge, big smile the whole time I'm walking through, and I'll bug you later. And I'll bug you later, but it's my hope we can find a way to fill that, fill that room with kids. So, thank you.
I just want to comment that the manager at Lincoln just emailed and said, I need more staff, because we're not able to cover the area that, where the wall was knocked down in the toy line. We're not able to cover it. We're getting so many kids. May I have extra staff until school starts? So it looks like the kids are coming.
Okay, well, that's all right. It's a really big room, a lot of space for kids. That's all I'm going to say. And if you haven't been, please go. It is fabulous.
And bring a five-year-old with you.
Yeah, three, four, whoever, just bring a kid, yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to the legislative portion of this meeting, and start with introductory number three thirty-one, which is authorizing an agreement related to children's savings accounts. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
So move in second. And before we take a vote, can I just ask, this is an eighteen-month process. Will there be progress reports along the way? What's the best way for us to know how this is shaping up?
You betcha, because as I get them, you'll get them. So, yeah, we'll make sure we update everyone along the way. So we're excited about this.
And will there be a council member or council staff on, I know there's a steering committee or a task force or something?
I don't, I'm not sure yet. But, you know, we like to populate council members on most of these committees. So I'm sure we'll be bugging somebody for this. I know we had the council president on our Office of Financial Empowerment Strategic Planning Committee. So I'm sure we'll be bugging a member of council to help serve on this as well.
Well, then it's on us for updating ourselves. So it takes a little bit of burden off your guys' shoulders as well. Thank you very much. To move in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Introduct number three thirty-two, authorizing an amendsory agreement related to homeownership grants. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Introduct number three thirty-three, appropriating funds and authorizing an amendsory agreement related to implementation of an enterprise software solution for the Parking and Municipal Code Violations Bureau. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
What question?
Councilmember Lupian?
Apart from this increase, are there any other projected increases in the maximum compensation? Other than this increase, will there be further increases expected, or is this?
Yeah. Like with anything- Right. This will get us move these items off of the mainframe into the newer in-force system. With any product where there's licensing and stuff involved, there will be increases moving forward with licensing, just like the million dollars I spend every year on the current mainframe. It goes up every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Introduct number three thirty-four, a resolution approving an appointment to the Rochester Civil Service Commission. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Second.
Councilmember Martin has a question.
Yes, could you just talk about what the process is for appointments? I know with other appointments, there are interviews, or there's an advertisement to the public. How does this fit into that?
For this one, we beg people. I mean, this is one that's very hard to find people that want to do it, because it meets sometimes once or twice a month. And it's very hard, because you have to keep a balance of Democrats, Republicans, and independents. They all can't beat, so it's, it's hard to, I'll be honest. I mean, it's very hard to find people that want to, that want to fill it. But once they do it, we interview them with, you know, HR to make sure that they don't have any conflicts. They can't have, so it's, it's hard to get people, but it goes through the same process. So if you know of people that are interested on this, we even, even what we're starting to do now is to come up with names of people that we can just, even if their seat's not available, at least tag them as somebody that might be interested and talk to them. Now, we've invited people to come and watch the meetings, to see what it's like. So if a seat opens up, to see if they're interested. But this is probably, right, Dr. Nichols, one of the hardest ones to fill. And, you know, we're a democratic city, and we can't have all Democrats. We got, so they can be independent, they can be working, they can be other parties. So it's hard to do that. So I would say to council, if you know of anybody that's interested in human resources type stuff, give us their name, even if it's not open, because invariably, an opening is going to come up, and it'd be good to be able to fill it. And why this is important is, is because sometimes we complain about the time it takes for us to fill positions and stuff. Ninety-eight point nine percent of all the positions in City Hall require civil service, and they have to go to this commission in order to get it done. So if we're down a person or can't have a quorum, that holds up a position being filled in the mayor's office or in the council's office. So this is, this is an area where we always struggle with filling people. But please, if anybody knows the names, even if it's not open, give them to us, and we'll do that. Usually, it's, this is not one where everybody's jumping up, raising their hands. We have to convince, even sometimes I have to say, who do you know? Can you convince them that it's not that bad to do it? And I think it's definitely one of those niche things, where it's people who are really interested in the human resources part of government.
That's a helpful explanation. Thank you.
This one can't be harder to fill than the elevator-
Second hardest.
Control board, or whatever it's called.
That's second hardest. That's second hardest, yeah.
All right, has this been moved and seconded?
If not, we'll do it again.
Let's do it again.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Introduct number three thirty-five, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement related to the Career Pathways to Public Safety Program. There are two disclosures. Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Lupian must recuse and abstain from the vote. Councilmember Harris, did you move it?
I moved it.
Can someone second it? Perfect. Let's take a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes with one recusal. Introduct number three thirty-six, authorizing an agreement relating to the Supervisory Skills Training Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lupian has a question?
The, is this the same company we've been using year over year? Is this a new company that we're going with?
This is the same company, right?
Yes, we started a contract with them three years ago.
Okay.
And we had an open RFP process, and we had two vendors that applied. They went through the evaluation and criteria process, and they were selected.
Do we have any metrics on how they've been performing?
Yes, I think some of it was in the transmittal, but I can get it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on three thirty-six? It's been moved. Did someone, was someone seconded? It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Introduct number-
Chairman Gruber, before we move on to the next item, I just would like to go back, if I could, to item, introductory number three thirty-five. The recusal on that related to the vote was for Councilmember Harris, but Vice President Lupian is able to vote on that.
Got it. Do you want to record a vote for that, Councilor, Vice President Lupian?
I assumed that I had been recorded.
Okay, great. So that was an aye, and that'll be recorded for the record. Thank you. Introduct number three thirty-seven, amending the twenty-three dash twenty-four budget for the Healthy Food Loan and Grant Program. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Smith?
Yes, what is the criteria for a business to become a healthy rock?
Oh, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. So we have, there's a whole methodology. So if you go, so if you go in a store that me and Councilmember Patterson visited, where they only had soda and chips, they probably wouldn't be considered. But there's actually a methodology that I saw for the first time yesterday, and it actually gives a score on the, on each of the stores. What kind of healthy, what kind of healthy foods are they carrying? Are they carrying any fruits and vegetables? Are they selling more than just beer, Lotto tickets, and those types of things? Are they selling cigarettes for a dollar or diapers, one by one, for a dollar? Which not all of our stores do, but some of them do, and they should not be doing that. So that's the, so we want to highlight and hone in on the ones that are doing the right thing. And believe it or not, there are a couple of model corner stores that are doing well. And I won't start naming them, but I'm thinking of one that's on the corner. They have some of the best chicken in Rochester. They're on the corner of South Clinton and Gregory. There's another one on Lisle Avenue, for example, that would get a high score. And then there's some that leave a lot to be desired. So it's based upon what kind of fresh fruit they have, what kind of items that they have within that store. And I don't know if Barbara was going to help the, on the internal committee on this, I don't know.
Yeah, the communications team is helping lead this and worked with one of our Harvard fellows who presented yesterday. And it is an objective document that, that's the number of food groups represented within the store, the different types of, anything from grains, legumes, includes canned vegetables. And there are very specific things. So it's an objective measure that we'll be able to track. And the street liaisons will maintain connection to the stores that are in the program to ensure that they don't drop below that threshold.
Okay, and will you be putting some type of tag on those stores? Or how will that work?
We will have signage that they'll be able to put out front, as well as a tag for their door, as well as some in-store point-of-sale materials. So they'll be able to promote specific healthy foods. So it's not just making sure people in the neighborhood know where healthy food's available in their neighborhood, but it's also, once you go into the store, you can find and locate the healthy food via some of this healthy foods signage.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
In the transmission, transmittal, the last part says, in the first eighteen months of the program, the administration may recommend that the Your Healthy Food Rock Grocer Program be extended. Can you tell me what metrics you use to determine success? And let's say a program isn't successful, but is on the verge. Are there ways they can seek support from this program?
Yeah, so as you know, this is a pilot. So one of the things we want to see is how well the stores maintain that health. Because it's very, grocery stores, and I'm learning about this now, I never thought I'd be coming like an expert like grocery stores. If you were at the mayor's office, you'll be, one of the things you learn is that it's, the margins are very thin. So it's just easier to sell, I mean, I can't say I don't blame them, but from a community perspective, you got to sell more than beer, Lotto, and all the other stuff. But that's just easier to do. It's harder. So let's say you're a store, and you are selling fresh fruits and vegetables, and nobody's picking that stuff up. It's very easy for you to be able to say, you know what, I'm just not going to do this anymore. I'm not going to sell it. And then that's not keeping within the program, right? So one of the supports that we want to give is, how do you market those materials? How do you, how do you say that, hey, how can you position it in the store to make people see that it's appetizing, that it's important for them to be able to do that? So that's one of the big metrics. And then also, do they expand the offerings that they might have in the, in the healthy category? How are they doing that? And I think overall, because this is a pilot, we don't want to continue something that might not be successful. I have every hope and belief that it will be. But, you know, we'll evaluate it based upon what's happening. And if stores are doing well, we'll continue to expand it. Similar to what we did with the, you know, we saw how great the Senior Mills Program was, and council just voted recently to extend it for a little bit longer, even though that's still a pilot. I think we'll do the same thing with this. But it's really going to be making sure that they continue down that path, expanding that path, and then what interventions we're able to help them to be successful. We want to help the ones that are designated the program to be successful, and we won't leave them out there by themselves.
I have a question.
Okay.
Has this program been done in another city before?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. Oh, yes, yes, it has. I'm sorry, Baltimore.
Baltimore.
Baltimore has a great, a great program, and they have like over five hundred stores that are involved in their, their, their healthy food program designation program. And they obviously use the same designation that we're going to be using as well. And there's one other city I can't remember. I don't know if you remember the other, the other city?
Yep, it's Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, yeah.
How did this idea come to us?
The mayor.
We, well, I mean, is there like an organization who's advocating for this?
No, well, you know, we, well, how it came to us is that we're tired of begging people to come and open up stores in our city. So we said, how can, and then we've been seeing on our walks and just through our work, remember, we have, the city has a food policy council that has been involved in a lot of these discussions. So shout out to the food policy council. They're quiet, but they drive a lot of the stuff that we, that we put forth. But also, as you know, we were just starting to see a lot of, when Walgreens closed, when all these other folks closed, so the presentation that we gave, that if you were in the room yesterday was, we're so sick and tired of playing defense. We want to play offense. And can we play offense with lifting up and expanding stores that are already doing the right thing, that might be smaller, but with a little bit of more help and support can expand their healthy food offerings? That can go beyond beer, cigarettes, and Lotto tickets. So this was a way for us to be able to, to be able to do that. Harvard, we asked them for help, and they gave us a fellow for the summer. And, I mean, we got our money's worth and then some.
So the idea is to support the businesses who are currently choosing to sell healthy food? Is it also to try to attract-
Absolutely.
New ones?
Get other ones to think about doing, doing, doing the exact same thing-
Right.
-to join that. Because we hope that that little tag that we'll come up with will be a badge of honor for them. And say, hey, I'm one of those places, so we can, we can lift them up. Because people pay attention to what other stores are doing. And maybe they feel as though they don't want to be left out, so they'll go and do it. But it's also providing the support to incentivize them to think about doing it, to know that it's, it's hard, but we're willing to support them in that effort to try to bring healthy foods to neighborhoods. Because it's just not fair. And some of the other, and I won't name any of them, you know, we have so many of a certain store, stores within our neighborhoods, they open up, but they don't sell, they don't sell any healthy food. It's all processed, it's all, none of it's, none of it's healthy. They're convenient for people, they go there, but good luck getting fresh fruits and vegetables from one particular store that I'm thinking of, that is a huge, huge presence in a lot of our neighborhoods.
Two more questions. So is this a recommendation of the food policy council?
Our overall Healthy Food Accessibility Program, which we already voted on, which council already voted on, which was the five million, was, was work that was done here at the city and in conjunction with the, with the food policy council. They weighed in on it, helped to shape it and put it out there.
Thank you. And then I know that this was something similar done through Food Link, not a couple of years ago, you know, trying to promote healthy food, not, you know, perishable food in stores. And it didn't work. But maybe you can shed some light on it, Mitch.
There's a lot of healthy corner store initiatives that have gone around, around the country, and they all have some things that have worked and some things that haven't worked. What we're being asked to vote on with three thirty-seven is a very small portion of something that has worked, which is to, which is to delineate stores that are trying to be part of the solution and stores that are not.
Well, I guess I just wonder the difference between the two programs. And the one that Food Link did didn't quite pan out. What, what did we learn? How is that being taken to a consideration?
I think that what we learned with this is, is that this is not, this is more so building upon the ones that are already successful in doing it. So for some of these people, this is going to be as easy as one, two, three, because they're all, they're already doing it. So it's supporting them to encourage them to continue to do it, or expand, or expand those offers, or getting people to already, already do it. So it's not as big of a lift as trying to go to Malik's Grocers that's not selling any of that stuff and saying, hey, we're going to give you a grant to do this. And then they're like, wait a minute, I'm not making any money on this, I'm not doing it. So that's the big difference.
I totally get the idea. I guess just in practice, we've seen in Rochester that it hasn't worked, and I want to know why it didn't work, how we're addressing it in this, you know, in this pilot. If you have any data from Baltimore or Pittsburgh?
Yeah, we can share that. Yeah, and we also should share the actual rankings and how that's decided, because that's also interesting to be able to do that. What does it take to be able to get those designations? But there's lots of, there'll be lots of lessons learned. And that's why we're making this as a pilot. You know, I'm a big, I'm always going to bring pilots to you all, because we want to, we want to try it out. And we learned from the last one. And this one is tweaked to be a little bit different, because we're starting off from a, from a position of strength, because we're looking at ones that are already doing it and rewarding them for doing that, and encouraging others to follow the lead and do the same thing. So I think that that's the big, that's the biggest difference.
I'm happy to share with you any lessons learned from the previous program too. But I'm going to move forward now with the vote on three thirty-seven.
Just, just one quick item, Councilmember Gruber. So not related specifically to three thirty-seven, but just for my confirmation. When it comes to the idea of attracting additional grocers, you know, some areas of the city have zero grocery stores and some have four or five. So I'm assuming that in this, this entire project, the five million total, when we look at this, we're going to invest in areas that are more or less without a grocery store.
And that's different from this legislation here. So remember, so the five million is mentioned, but this is a piece of that five million. But a part of that five million is also all about attraction.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure I understood.
That's a huge, in fact, that's one of the biggest pieces of the, of the, of the five million. This is-
But attraction in areas that we have nothing.
Oh, well, food deserts, we have food deserts. I mean, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunity to do that. We have many places in the city where we need a grocery store that fits the criteria of offering healthy food and not just being a- of offering healthy food and not just being a, a, we don't want to attract, we don't, we're not looking to attract grocery stores that are not offering the right types of services that our residents are asking for.
So I'll move it.
It moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducter number three thirty-eight, authorizing an agreement relating to the twenty-twenty-three Rochester Fringe Festival. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducter number three thirty-nine, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
Seconded.
It moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducter number three forty, authorizing a grant agreement relating to library outreach services. There's one disclosure from myself, but I'm, I am allowed to participate in discussion and vote. Any questions, comments, or concerns on three forty?
Comment. Thank you, um, Director Utaro, for sharing with me the information on Raising a Reader. Um, I've enjoyed reading it and I look forward to following up with you to get more information.
Just let me know if you have questions.
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying. Good. Thank you for sharing the information on Raising a Reader program and I'll be following up with you.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes, this van is incredible. Um, is the hundred thousand for just, uh, acquiring and retrofitting the van or is any of it allocated to salary for the person who might be driving the van?
The hu- the hundred thousand is covering the purchase of the vehicle, which is around fifty-eight thousand, and the remaining amount will be used to retrofit the van with the designs we picked from, from RIT. Uh, the, we're not adding staff to operate this project. Um, that's why we are using the Lyle branch. Um, Deputy Director Lewis has worked on this project actually for a lot longer than she mentioned. This goes back to two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, um, in response to our branch facilities, uh, master plan that identified Lyle as our least used but most needed, one of our most needed branches. Um, one of the things that we learned during that process was that people were not comfortable walking to the library and the recommendation from our consultant was to consider turning the library into a mobile operation. Um, we didn't want to do that completely, um, and completely shut down the brick and mortar operation, because there is usage there for things like computers, for notary services, faxing and copying. So we are blending the service and creating a hybrid model using the existing staff that we've got.
Thank you. And one follow-up question, would it change the current hours of the Lyle branch?
Uh, the way that we are planning this right now is that the Lyle, uh, branch building would be open for full service three days a week and on the other three days a week would be open for limited service while staff are on the road with the bookmobile.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Any further questions on three forty? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move it.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Introducter number three forty-one, amending ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-eight relating to a grant agreement for the preservation of historic society collections. Any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion. It's been moved.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And finally, introducter number three forty-two, authorizing a mandatory agreement to administer the general liability insurance program. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Martin?
Can you, uh, say more about this program, what the, this fund is used for?
All, all they are are the people who administer the decisions that are made by finance and in my office. So we settle a case, we send it to them, they keep track of all the cases, they keep track of the reserves we've decided, they issue the checks, they process the paper. It, it's really not much more than that.
Just administrate.
It's not a decision-making entity at all.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question? Okay, um, let's vote on three forty-two, or let me take a motion for three forty-two?
Move it.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Councilmember Lupien?
Um, yes, I have two additional questions. Um, one, uh, how is the report on the, um, claims to the city of Rochester?
President Melendez's and James's hand.
Oh, okay.
I released it three days ago.
Okay.
I sent it by email to you guys.
So we'll make sure we forward it out.
Yeah.
I didn't realize others weren't on the thread, so.
Okay. Um, and the second question, can you, um, give us an accounting of how much is in our savings? I don't know, you call that fund balance? Um, how much is in our savings and what percentage is the reserve? Like, I don't know who to look at.
We can get that information to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with no further business, that concludes the finance committee. Thank you very much.